Call to order Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, September the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll recognize Commissioner Yoder for the invocation and Commissioner Pendle for the pledge of allegiance. If you would please stand.
Let us pray. My kindly gracious Father, we appreciate the opportunity that we can gather together and do the business of the county. At this time, I'd like to ask you to all to be in prayer for the Marvin Bowman family. He was a county commissioner in Irondale County. He was the first black commissioner there. Lord be with him and his family and the citizens of Irondale County. He gave a lot to that county and a lot to the state, and we appreciate the things that he done. Be with the folks in England after losing their queen. Be with the family of her and other citizens of that area. We'd ask you to be with all law enforcement and emergency personnel as they go about each and every day to look after us and to take care of us and respond to our needs. We'd ask that you look after our local, our state, and our federal leaders, and also across the country, Lord, to look after our national leaders. Be with them that you would give them the guidance and the direction that they need to bring peace throughout the world. Now, as we go forth in our meeting, be with us that we make the decisions that's right for this county and for these citizens as we represent each and every one of them. We ask all those things to thy name. Amen.
Amen.
If you would draw your attention to the American flag. Kenshin, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, I recognize any commissioner have a report going.
Commissioner Layle and I met over in Bethlehem this weekend to open up the golf course restaurant over there. Had a nice little crowd, and afterwards, I had the opportunity to eat lunch there. I can say the food is really good. The service was good. The hospitality was good, and I was really amazed at the number of people there that was playing golf. That place was absolutely packed. And it's a real nice restaurant. They've done a real good job of remodeling, and a new owner is doing some things that he hopes that will help the Bethlehem community and prosper in that area. So, we're glad to have them and glad to have another restaurant in Alexander County. Get the opportunity. They are serving Sunday buffet also. So, get the opportunity to go over and have lunch with them there in Bethlehem.
I would just say quickly, I didn't get to stay to eat. I had to get one of my children to, as they say, "churable," to play baseball Saturday. So, I had to leave thinking to eat, but I couldn't believe the people that were there. Our public information director had to park across the street. I made my own parking space beside a sand pile beside the cart shed because the parking lot was slammed full. So, obviously, the golf course is doing well. The restaurant, I didn't get to eat, but it's very tastefully decorated. I did see the menu, and I'll say it looks good. I haven't eaten there, but as with any other local business, hope folks would support them and wish them well.
Absolutely.
All right. Sounds good. Sound like a place worth checking out. So, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to adoption of agenda. Any motion?
Motion, we adopt agenda.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion or question? If there's none, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number one. Madam Clerk, anyone for public comment? Okay, no one for public comment. Moving along to item number two, public hearing, approval of proposed schedule of values. Recognize Jimmy Tanner and Doug Fox, Tax Administrator. Make a motion. We open the public hearing?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just a, we'll be very brief, but on August the first, we presented the schedule of values for the two thousand and twenty-three reappraisal to you guys. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one oh five three seventeen C, we're required to have a public hearing, and that's why we're here. The general statutes require seven-day period after the public hearing before the schedule of values can be considered to be for approval. So, we will be back at your October third meeting to request that you consider the adoption of the scheduled value.
Okay. Anyone in the audience want to speak? Have a question? You need to, if you come to the podium, that way everyone can hear you on the radio and everything. Appreciate. Well.
If these are gonna be done, when are they gonna be done? And how is this gonna affect the senior citizens of the county? Because if they reevaluate their property tax, that's gonna make their taxes go up, and that's gonna make their homeowner's insurance go up because the value of their property has gone up, and the property is not valued at what it went through because of COVID. So, how is it gonna affect our seniors? Their social security is not gonna go up to meet this. Do I get an answer?
Well, maybe Doug can answer to that.
I mean, what's taken into account? Do they take anything into account? You have to be sixty-five for it to be decreased or, you know, not to have to pay the amount of property tax.
Well, I will say, nothing's been finalized, and we'll be meeting again. And, you know, if you want to address it, but we're gonna try to, you know, try to keep things as close as we can to normal. But as we said before, with the revow, that's something that is required by us, by the state of North Carolina, to do a revaluation every...
Seven years, is that eight years?
Is there any way to file for some kind of a postponement until the property value actually levels out? Because they're coming down from what they, I mean, they skyrocketed, and they are coming down some now. But, I mean, is there something that could be done like that?
Well, I know about every county, I've talked to a lot of people, and all of the counties are going through the same thing that we are. So, it's not been rolled out yet, so we're still, you know, let's not panic yet. Let's just kind of wait and see, and Doug will maybe address some of that when he comes.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not up to us what the values, I mean, it's not. It's not up to us what the values of the property are. I mean, you know, there's state statutes that we have to follow as a county. I don't, you know, I don't like to pay property tax any more than anybody else does.
Right. But you're also not a senior citizen that lives on a budgeted income, and that's what I was saying. These individuals, I mean, you get an increase in social security and be John Brown, if they're not gonna turn around and take it back by increasing the deductible that you gotta pay.
That's a problem with the federal government.
That is true, but that's your citizens, too.
I understand completely.
You know, that's your senior citizens that are gonna suffer from this, and that's why I'm saying is there not something we can look at doing now?
Please don't think I'm trying to be, you know...
Oh, I'm not.
I mean, I have parents. Well, my mother's still alive, and, you know, and she just turned seventy-six last week. And I understand completely, you know. But the world we live in right now is the world we live in, and I hate to say that.
That's true, but then you got to say, okay, how do we, there's a way around a lot of things, you know, and I guess I'm looking to y'all to say, okay, is there somebody that we need to write to? Is there some way that we can have the seniors to do something to say, this is the route that we, at least we have a chance to try to do something? That's what, you know, I'm looking for.
And I'll be the first to say, I'm not an expert when it comes to the tax office or, you know, anything else. I don't think any of us that are up here are. I do know, I mean, there is a break for, there is a break for senior citizens compared to the full, you know...
At sixty-five. It doesn't take effect till you're sixty-five. We have seniors that are sixty that live on social security, you know.
And I think, based on my age, I'm gonna be seventy-three before I'm eligible for social security, you know?
Right. Based on mine, I'm gonna be sixty-eight, you know, but still, you know, that's what I'm looking for now if there is a route to help these seniors. That's what I'm looking for. Is there some route we need to go?
I would hope, I would hope, you know...
There's, you know, there's always the appeal process, you know, if someone, you know, thinks that, isn't that correct, Doug? So many days you have to, you know, to appeal. But like I say, nothing's been really in stone, you know, as far as what will be happening. So, at our next meeting, you know, there'll be some more information.
But you're looking at doing this in two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that would be effective two thousand and twenty-three or effective two thousand and twenty-four?
Effective two thousand and twenty-three.
So, have you already done the evaluations now?
We're working on them now. We're still working on them.
At the rate that it is right now?
It'll be effective as January one. We're, you know, all the fieldwork has basically been done now to, you know, the checkered measurements and conditions. The actual values is established as of January one value. So, you know, now we're watching that market up until January one. But that's North Carolina state statutes. That's not Alexander County or any other county or state statute. We have to do what the values in January one...
Excuse me just one moment.
It's the same if values is low, we still have to step in.
Excuse me just one moment. I don't mean to interrupt you. I totally apologize. But when you're speaking, if you all guys don't mind, lady, please step up to the mic because of the radio and the broadcast and everything, so everybody can hear you, please.
And if you could, I know you're, but if you could say your name that way.
Oh, I'm Vicki Martin.
Okay. And Mr. Tanner, if you would mind to step up and, you know, what you were telling her.
Yeah, what I was saying is, you know, when we do reappraisals in North Carolina, it's established by North Carolina state statutes. And the statutes require that whatever year reappraisal, the values is effective as of January one of that year. So, you know, if the house is worth a hundred thousand dollars, we'd sell for a hundred thousand, and the tax value would be a hundred thousand dollars, or relatively close. And, you know, the same exclusions, exemptions for elderly and disabled, all that stuff's still in place. You know, that's the one thing, if they, if they meet the criteria for that, they should qualify for that. That's not changed. That's still in place, just like it's always been.
Okay.
Is there somebody that if we wanted to send letters to or find out more information about it, is there something that our seniors could send information to?
Well, this is the same problem that's been in place forever. I mean, that's, and that's what it does. They get up to fifty percent of the value off.
That's true, but if somebody doesn't...
And if it's a low value, they get all of it off.
But if somebody doesn't try to make changes, you know, then nothing will change.
Yeah, well, that's legislation, not the county. But, you know, that's the same thing that's been talked about for fifty years, and they've got the laws in and the statutes in place to what they think will help the elderly. So, I don't see them changing that anymore. They do increase the threshold for that each year.
But it's still sixty-five?
Oh, the age is sixty-five, or permanently disabled.
Mm-hmm. So, that's what I'm saying. Where do we send, if it's not here and it's not you, where do they send their request to find out how they can go forward to?
North Carolina legislation's the one that sets all that.
What you would need to do is contact your state representative in the House and contact your state senator that represents our district.
Getting ready to be in election, too, for all of that, so...
Mr. Tanner, I've got a question for you while you're at the podium. Is there currently anything in place on discount for any veterans on the tax or not?
There is. I mean, they're, you know, the home son exemption for North Carolina, it covers a broad range of things. So, I mean, they need to, you know, somebody needs to check into each one of them. A lot of times, it's involved in the income, you know, whether it's their permanent household or not, things like that. So, each individual needs to check into that.
Commissioner Pendle, you have to be a hundred percent service-connected disabled.
To receive any...
For veteran, for the veteran side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any, any other questions? I guess we need to close the, you guys, that's pretty much all you have. Need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, and we'll be seeing you around. Thanks a lot. Moving on to item number three, public hearing for the twenty-four fifty-three ten grant submission. Recognize Mr. Thomas Mitchell, our DSS director.
Hey, good evening. So, this is our two-year cycle for the fifty-three ten grant. It's basically for our rural transportation. This does have a ten percent match, and the match money is in the DSS budget that's already been accounted for, that's already been approved. And that's pretty much it, in case you guys have any questions.
Need to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. That's my fault.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Now, we're good to go. So, this is a transportation grant that's kind of...
For rural counties that don't have transportation providers of their own, like a county provider.
Yeah, so it works through Greenway, correct?
Most of the money goes through Greenway. We do have some other providers as well. Blue Ridge, one of them.
Okay. Any questions from anyone in the audience? We need to close it. Okay, we open it now. I'm making a motion to close it.
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Oh, that's right.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, I'd entertain the motion to approve the grant submission.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that for fiscal year twenty-four, that we approve the fifty-three ten grant submission.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Being none? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is the amount for public hearings. Moving on to item number four, public hearing for approval of road names, Old Sam House Lane and Robert Deal Drive. And before I recognize Mr. French, we'll open the public hearing. Have a motion.
I'll move that we open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. And Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff requests the approval of Old Sam House Lane, which is off Howell Church Road, and Robert Deal Drive, which is off Daniels Lumbergh Road, to be considered by the board tonight. The names have been checked for duplication and sounded indexing and meet future criteria.
Okay. Anyone in the audience to speak? Have a question about the road name? Okay. No, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Thank you. Majored in announcement. Okay, I guess we need to approve the...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the two new road names, being Old Sam House Lane, which is previously road fifteen fifteen C G, and Robert Deal Drive, which is, was previously fourteen oh four.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to item number six, or item number five, excuse me. Recognize Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jennifer Hefner, and our Sheriff, Chris Bowman. And this is in reference to Alexander County School Safety Grant for School Resource Officer Hiring Proposal. Thank y'all for coming.
Good evening. We come to you this evening to talk to you a little bit about a proposal for SRO officers. And I'd like to start out by saying, as y'all know, especially in the last five years, across the nation, how times have changed at our schools. And it's not just really here in the county, but it's, like I said, across the nation. And it's come to the point that we're gonna have to start looking at a SRO officer at each school in the county. Like I said, the times have changed, and they're not changed to the better. With all the school shootings and everything else going on, we can't turn our heads to more, and we need to look at it seriously. Even here in the local schools, you know, we're looking at drugs, weapons, assaults, threats, that has to be handled. The SRO hiring grant through the state, which Dr. Hefner will address the grant itself here in a few minutes. But out of the six, six of the seven elementary schools is under the sheriff's jurisdiction here in the county. One of the SROs currently share between two elementary schools. And I'm not mentioning the schools for a reason, not being security reasons. I have them listed that I can make available to you, but I don't think we need to, you know, publish them in the public hearing where that everybody knows the school that's not covered. Five new SRO positions required for full coverage at elementary schools. And the total estimated cost for these five positions is approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the first year. And that's for the first year only, and I'll go into more detail. The grant funding, the way, understanding, and again, Dr. Hefner will go more in detail, but it may cover up to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars toward this total of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Approximately five hundred and thirty thousand dollars to be covered by the county. Future funding after one year would only be required to cover salaries and fringe benefits at a estimate approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. That's after the first year. Due to the increase of grant funding available, this is, I think, a good opportunity to look at the funds for this position. In closing, I'd like to just say the importance of having school resource officers stationed at every school campus here in the county. I'm confident that you agree that the safety of the staff and the teachers, the staff, the teachers, the students, is high priority. I feel strongly that recent changes in the availability of this grant funding for hiring school resource officers show that now's the best time to address this. And I know it's gonna take, you know, the money to do it, but like I said in the beginning, it's time to look at it and try to do our best to provide the money and the positions that we can have at each school that's not already covered by SRO. Any questions up to this point? I will go in to say that we figured this on a beginning salary of forty-one thousand dollars minimum for a school resource officer. And yearly benefits, approximately twenty-four thousand. Total per officer come to around sixty-five thousand. And for five positions, that'd come to around approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the grant amount would be approximately two hundred and twenty thousand, okay, from that. The reason it's so high, or sounds so high, is that these officers are sworn officers and that they have to be equipped just like any other patrol officers. And approximately to this date, a vehicle is around forty thousand dollars. Well, that vehicle has to be equipped with, and I'll give you a couple, in-car camera, in-car radio, Viper, the new, that's coming into effect, light sirens, cage, window tint, vehicle striping, installation fees, and total per officer there's like sixty-seven thousand. And if you multiply that by five, should come up close to three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Two, uniform each officer. And, let me get my glasses on. Two, uniform an officer. Approximately, they are issued winter pullover shirts, inner belts, boots, pullover shirts, three each, BDU pants, three each, is what they're issued, duty belt with pouches, belt keepers, which holds the belt to the belt that the officer wears, class A pants, which is a dress uniform. It's not like their everyday patrol uniform, the BDUs. Class A shirts also, and these, the pants and the shirts are just used on special occasions, you know, a funeral or whatever the special occasion would be. High gloss shoes, campaign hat, high gloss duty belt, traffic vest, raincoat, badge, so on. So, the uniform parts approximately a thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Other equipment that would include that the officer be issued is stop sticks, which go in the cars, patrol cars, duty holsters, backup holster, taser, ballistic vest, body one cameras, walkie, two pistols, one primary and one backup, rifle, shotgun, jump box, which is to jump off cars when needed for the public, and a lockout kit. Lockout kit being consist of being able to unlock cars. And they run approximately around a hundred dollars. But this is a kit that is issued to each vehicle because kids being locked in the car, dogs, animals being locked in the cars, and just helping the public out to unlock their vehicle to get their keys out. So, uniform and equipment total for five officers would be about seventy-five thousand dollars of that total I gave you. Total amount per newly hired SRO is approximately hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total amount to hire five, again, multiply that, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And again, I just want to strongly say that that is to get it kicked off the first year. Now, there is a one school that is not figured into this, that's, I guess it'd be safe to say, inside the city, that I think would be the same cost, basically the same cost as what I just gave you for a SRO out in the county. And no questions, I'll ask Dr. Hefner to come up and explain about it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What's the daily activity of a SRO at a school besides just making a presence?
Well, that to interact with the students. Students, after they get to know the SRO, and I'm speaking at the ones that we have now, they have a good relationship. Matter of fact, they come and talk to them easier than they talk to their parents. Matter of fact, they come and talk to them easier than they talk to their parents. And like I said, they're there to, you know, protect. And the five schools that we don't have any officers there, we still have our problems with high rate parents, with drugs, weapons, this type of thing, still being brought in, which the road patrol responds to that. But I'll give you a number, and I think each one of you got it sent to you in an email last month in August. My 911 communication center took in 9,012 non-emergency calls, and gentlemen, that's not including the calls that comes into my office, administrator department. 911 calls, in addition to those 9,000, is 1,336. And the sheriff was sent in the month of August, 2,813 calls that had to be answered one way, shape or another, either by report, telephone call, it had to be followed up on. Now, as far as the SRO officer, their train, they have to have special training as up and above a regular patrol officer to be a SRO officer, to handle any situation that, you know, arises.
I can give you an example of something that happened on one of the elementary campuses this afternoon. Mother was involuntarily committed for drug use, and she was the only person down to be able to pick up the child at school. Father's name, father shows up, father's name's not even on the birth certificate. So all of the sudden, we have a domestic issue where we don't have anything that gives this gentleman any right at all to pick up this child. And we had to have an officer's intervention with that, because as you can imagine, the father was very angry, but we didn't have any legal rights to turn the child over to him, even though mom had been involuntarily committed. And that's just an example of where a resource officer helps us in situations we don't even foresee.
Okay. And, well Sheriff, when school's not in or something, if you need an officer, then these people would be able to fully function out on the road?
That is correct, yes. That's why that the equipment is just like a normal patrol officer, that two months out of the year that we use them, you know, on the road, serving papers, lake patrol, wherever they're needed.
Okay, thank you.
One, one question, because I'm, I'm, I'm a numbers nerd. Just a verification, the 2021, 2022 statistics that you guys, you know, provided for us, incidents by type, which on our information, like page 23, 24, 25, so on, were those all, was that system-wide, or was that elementary schools?
Uh, that was system-wide.
Okay, because I'm sitting there going, there's, some of this stuff couldn't have been.
Yeah, it's, it's system-wide.
If this stuff's going to elementary schools, there's, there's, there's an issue.
Yeah.
You know, but, okay.
Okay.
Because I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because I was thinking, man, who's sending their second grader to school with a, you know, a weapon?
Well, occasionally we get a pocket knife.
I'm not saying it doesn't happen.
That's right.
I mean, yeah, I'm not saying it doesn't happen.
Occasionally we get a pocket knife, but that's not typical.
It's a lot more serious than it was when I was in school, so it's a whole different day.
When I was in school, everybody had a pocket knife and it was okay.
We used to bring rifles with us.
All the guys in high school had a gun rack in the back of their truck and had their rifle where they would go hunting. Yeah, that afternoon.
My MG didn't have a gun rack.
Yeah, you wasn't out in the country.
So after year one, the sustainability is around 325,000 per se?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Is, is the grant annual, I mean, is it, is it, is it a continuing thing?
I, I would like to answer some questions about the grant at this time. So thank you Chairman Reese, Vice Chairman Pennell, and County Manager French, and board members. Just a couple details about this safety grant. It was submitted by the deadline, which was August 31st. We have been told that an announcement will be made to let us know how much we will be awarded in September. They haven't given us a date. It is a yearly grant, and the funds have to be spent by June 30th of '23. So you did get a copy of exactly what was submitted. And as far as the school system, we would like to have a full-time resource officer at every one of our schools. And as Sheriff Bowman mentioned, we have some elementary schools that don't have any kind of coverage at this time. Sheriff Bowman and I have been talking about this for a long time. Our conversation started back at the beginning of the year last year. Now, some things that have fueled this conversation, Uvalde, Texas, in May, certainly got all of our attention, and it also got the parents' attention in this county, because they assumed that because we didn't talk a lot about safety, that we didn't have safety measures in place. So we've made an effort to make sure that we've done a better job communicating to parents the things that are already in place on our campuses. But we did indeed ask for funding. As far as the grant application, this is something that's been in place for a number of years. We apply every year. The thing that changed for us this year is the funding formula for low-wealth counties. There had been a two-to-one match, two, with two state funding to the one local funding. That changed for low-wealth counties this year, it changed to a four-to-one match. So we have asked for seven full-time officers, one at each elementary school, asking the state to fund $44,000 per officer and to have local funding of $11,000 per officer. Now, with this grant application, we were not allowed to ask for anything other than salary and benefits. We were not allowed to ask for anything for equipment. So if you say, well Jennifer, on about page five of your application, clearly it says equipment purchase capitalized 541, and you see a total of $52,730 in that line, that is for vape detectors at East Alexander Middle School and West Alexander Middle School. We're having a terrible time with vaping. And it also is for the window clings at Bethlehem, Sugarloaf, Stony Point, and Taylorsville. Those would help us complete projects that we had previously planned for, but we did ask for some additional funding for those things. So the $308,000 that has been requested for the officers will be for their salaries only. Do you have other questions about the, the grant application?
The grant's been applied for, you just haven't heard it's come through?
Correct, correct. And we want this on your radar. I also must share with you, school started back for students on August 29th. Well, you all know what happened around Kentucky Fried Chicken on August 29th. And I actually had four campuses that day on a code-in. Just because something doesn't happen on a school campus doesn't mean that a campus of children couldn't be affected by the situation. After that, we had a fugitive in Hidnite, and I had Hidnite Elementary on a code-in. And as recent as Friday, I had Ellendale Elementary on a code-in because a fugitive running from the law in the Mountain Ridge Church area. So that's already three instances where Sheriff Bowman and I have been on the telephone, and a code-in simply means the campus is locked down. Nobody leaves the campus and nobody comes into the campus until the community situation has been taken care of, or until the sheriff feels that it's safe enough to lift that code-in. So we do not live in the same day that we did when I was lucky enough to be a child here, or when you, Josh, were lucky enough to be a student in this school system. And now is the time that we need to have conversation about funding a resource officer at every campus.
Yes, all right, thank you. Any other questions? I think we all want to be safe and be as safe as we possibly can be. I guess you will update us as the grant comes through?
Oh, listen, I'm planning to speed dial Mr. French. The moment that I hear back from the grant application, we're hoping that we're, that we are funded everything that we have asked for, but I will certainly update you. We'll, we'll publish it everywhere.
Okay, and it could be a recurring grant, correct?
Well, this is just a yearly grant, but what they have told us is, is that they plan to put this in the budget, a certain amount of money that can be applied for annually.
Okay.
But there's no guarantee that we'd get it every year, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so basically, if you don't mind Dr. Hefner and Sheriff Bowman, don't have to give them an exact number, but let's say each year, how much we would be looking at each year if something were to happen? And you did not get the grant, okay? Because you've got to look at both sides, did we or didn't we? So what's, what's the cost that you are going to be looking for?
Again, keep in mind, you know, that one year is the high figure.
That's the highest year because of the equipment.
And after that, we estimate around 220,000. Because the equipment, the uniforms, normally, you know, they don't have to be replaced in three, four years, I'm sorry.
Three twenty?
Two twenty.
Two twenty? For five, at sixty? That's three.
Let me make sure I'm right on that.
Three twenty.
Be 325,000 a year.
Three twenty-five.
And please note, that would only be for five. And, um...
Because I think the others, the others are already funded.
Well, one has been, that's split between two elementary schools, and then one Sheriff Bowman didn't ask for because it's in the city limits.
Right.
I would have, be having the conversation with the Chief of Police.
Right.
Would, would, would the town have any, like our part, you know, as far as the town chipping in with a school being in the municipality?
I would ask that, but I'm, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the town to, to commit them, but that is a conversation that I will have with Chief Bowman and with the town manager.
All right, thank you.
And, and two, you know, I know we're all on the same board, you know, same page with this, children, grandchildren, and it's like Mr. Lael said there a while ago, the world's not the same place, and I don't see it changing anytime soon to get back to where we were.
Question. If this was approved, how long would it actually take to get the new hires in or people put in those places with the extra training involved so that they could be an SRO officer at one of our schools? What's the, what's the timeframe?
I wish that I could really answer that. Just to let you know that we have two possible experienced SROs from another, I've got to be careful, another county that is interested if this passes. One of them has like 10 years' experience, which is going to save a lot of money. Of course, the salary will be a little bit higher because of his experience and knowledge and won't have to send to, to special training. But we have two that have showed interest in two of the positions. And the other ones, we just have to go with applicants and go from there.
They have to attend a week-long training. That is required of all resource officers, correct? So the advertising, interviewing, and at least a week's worth of training for resource officers. So I don't know, what do you think?
And it may be, it may be some of my staff that is interested in it. We really hadn't publicized it yet, you know, to see what's going to happen with this grant and of course see what happens with the, the board too, so.
Chair?
Sheriff, if, if this were to happen, do you have enough deputies today to cover this till you could get fully staffed?
From the road, no.
So you'd still just be in the same position you are today?
Well, we'd be, we'd be a little bit better off because we could do like we're doing presently, is that we have a SRO that's covering two schools at one time, if that makes sense. One day at one school, next day at another school. I mean, you know, till we get it filled, with these two that is interested, we could do that with them. It'd be halfway coverage, I guess you'd say.
Okay. Any one else?
Well, I just got to ask, okay, we're sitting here and we're talking about a grant, okay, we're putting the big F out there. I don't know about anybody else, but the elephant in the room to me is, what happens if you don't get the grant? What are you going to do and what's the plan then? I mean, I, it, it, we've got to ask, I mean, I just got to know, I mean, I'm sitting here thinking, you know.
I'll be back to ask again and again, because thi- this is real, it's, it's real. And sometimes just a, a police car in a parking lot might make a person think twice about going in and carrying out plans of harm.
Yeah, not knowing, yeah.
Yeah, not knowing exactly what would be on the other side of that locked door might make somebody think twice.
Visibility is very, very, very important in law enforcement.
It's key.
You know, we had the, the drive-by or whatever you want to call it, up at the car wash, KFC, wherever. And I'm pretty confident that we do have active gangs in our area. You know, what, what price, the, the real question is, what price do you put on for the safety of the kids of the county? Simple as that. I don't think you can put that price.
No, just one thing.
So there's where I was standing.
Yeah, well, we need to go ahead and start socking away our money, I guess.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
Well, and, and Mr. Chairman, I would add, I mean, as the parent of a lot of children, just say that. I mean, I'm, you know, I have two at West Middle School this year. I have one at Bethlehem, I have one at NC pre-K, I have one that graduated last year, one that graduated three years ago, and one more that will be there someday. You know, and for my first grader at Bethlehem, one of the highlights of his life is when Officer Rowe is there in the mornings, helping unload cars, you know, and, you know, I know he's the air officer, and is very, you know, and he's, and he's standing in the back of the room, but, you know, that is, you know, my first, first gr- well, my now first grader, used to be kindergartner, looks for, you know, looked forward to Wednesdays when Officer Rowe was at school. And somehow, you know, a lot of mornings, we'd end up in his little, you know, in his drop-off, even though there's six, you know, six people in a row, principal and, and others. You know, a lot, a lot of mornings, we'd, I mean, and I would agree, a presence is, not, a, a presence is very important. I would also utter my opinion that everybody can't be an SRO. Everybody, you know, every officer should not be an SRO. That's just my opinion. They, they need to be special people that want to be an SRO, because...
A lot of the responsibility of an SRO is to build a trusting relationship.
Right.
And we have skirted some situations by having children who trusted an SRO enough to let them know the talk on social media, Snapchat.
Or what's going on at home with their parents.
Absolutely. So relationship building is a big responsibility of an SRO.
You know, I, I had teen breakfast with my sixth grader at West Middle School last Tuesday, Wednesday, I don't remember, you know, and the school resource officer was there. And, you know, and they all think she's cool because she raises spider monkeys. You know, I didn't even know spider monkeys were... You know, I didn't even know spider monkeys were a real thing, but the SRO has spider monkeys. And on occasion, she, you know, she brings one to school. And so, you know, and she, she does a great job. I mean, and in my opinion, she does a great job. But, um, but like I say, I, I think it takes a special person to do that job well.
And I agree, and like I said, back here's two examples that, uh...
And I didn't mean to leave Shannon out, sorry.
That is, uh, retired from SRO, but it's nowhere that these two can go, that any of the schools, that, um, they come up to them if they're still in school. And, you know, I've seen them hug them and shake their hands and all this. And that's, like I said a while ago, the visibility plays a big part in it, but, um, them getting to know the students is a big part also, because they can trust these, uh, SRO officers and, uh, got somebody they can talk to easier than they can their parents. And I'm not saying that's bad about parents, but some children just have issues of talking of things that's going on at the school or at home, like you said, easier with the officer.
All right. It's, yeah, all the good information far as, and when we hear from the grant, then we'll get back together again and we'll make our plans for going forward, so. I appreciate y'all taking the time to present it to us tonight.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number six, resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. And I recognize Cherry Kilby, our Veteran Service Officer.
That's a little high.
Make it work.
Thank you guys for letting me present this. I kind of wanted to give you a little bit of history because until about a month ago, two months ago, we hadn't heard of this. But waiting to jump out of a military aircraft, a service member waits for a red light to turn green, signaling that it's time to go. Training makes this process automatic. What is not automatic is a smooth transition into civilian life once service is complete. In 2021, the state of New York wanted to do something new and special to honor service members and let them know that their service was appreciated and helped to ease that transition into civilian life, and Operation Green Light was born. By shining a green light, we let our veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported. The green light signifies that it's time to go and connect with Veteran Service Officers and start exploring available VA benefits. Operation Green Light's mission is to show support for all veterans with a special emphasis on the veterans of Iraq and Afghanistan, as well as raise awareness about the challenges faced by many veterans and the resources that are available at the county, state, and federal level to assist veterans and their families. This year, Alexander County and the Alexander County Veteran Service Office is proud to participate in this new national collaborative initiative. From November seventh through the thirteenth, the following buildings will be illuminated in green. That's the Alexander County Services Center and the Alexander County Courthouse Park Building. We invite residents and businesses to participate by simply changing one light bulb in their homes and businesses to a green bulb. This can be an exterior light that neighbors and passersby see, or an interior light that sparks a conversation with friends and family. And the resolution reads as follows. Whereas the residents of Alexander County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Alexander County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil services, and by functioning as county Veteran Service Officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access the more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a higher risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and burrows to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Alexander County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, therefore, be it resolved, with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, the Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, November eleventh, 2022, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, the Alexander County Board of Commissioners encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. I appreciate the county's efforts to support our veterans and appreciate the Board of Commissioners' consideration of this resolution in support of Operation Green Light. Do you guys have any questions?
I think it's a very good presentation, and thank you, because I was at the North County Association of County Commissioners meeting. It came up there, I was in that and listened to the entire conversation, and it was outstanding. As a matter of fact, I think I came back on, when I got back on Monday, I called Mr. French. I said, "We need to go through this green light." And Mr. French said, "Larry, we already know about it." I said, "Well, thank goodness, you know?" But I mean, it was very, very good, because one of the things that came out of that meeting, I was just really impressed with the number of people that were in there and discussing one of the major concerns was suicide. And our military personnel, whether most folks realize how high that number is, it's unbelievable.
Twenty-two days.
And we, as American citizens, we, as United States government, are not doing enough for our military personnel to help them meet that transition. We're not there to help them come off that airplane, we're not there to help them come off that ship. And yes, that, I, I'm not a military person, and when I say that, I never served, okay? But I have total respect for all of our military personnel and watch the trials and tribulations that they have gone through over the years. We, as American citizens, need to be thankful that these men, whether it was through the draft or whether through as voluntary to be a military personnel, we need to stand up for these people and stand out and help them.
Yes.
And there's no reason for our military personnel to be out there and be on drugs and be homeless and not have a place to go every night. Shame on Americans for letting that happen.
Yes, sir.
And I say that wholeheartedly, and to listen to the folks that spoke that day, it was very, very, very moving, and people were there that discussed. And the one thing that we need to stop, even in civilian life, but we really need to put an emphasis on looking after our military personnel in that transition because the suicide rate is so high. And you can't ask these people to go to Iraq, go to Afghanistan, back to back to back to back to back, that it doesn't start affecting them in some way, shape, or form. Some of us have never seen that type thing before, and yes, we need to take support of them, we need to look after them, and we need to burn that green light. I always tickle the death to hear this program, and it was in NACO in Colorado when it came up and everything. That's where it first started.
Yes.
With these people coming up and rising up and saying, "Let's do something, let's draw attention." And the way we can do that is by government and by citizens turning on that green light.
And it's such a little thing.
And it needs to happen, and we need to respect our military personnel.
Yes, sir.
And they need help at times. Some can move and transition better than others, some are stronger than others, but all of us are weak to a certain extent, and we need to reach out for help. And, and we need to make sure that happens. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's very important, and I'm so glad that you did this and, and brought this up tonight, and I knew it was coming, so I sat back and I waited, but I wanted you to know that I appreciate the job you do and our military personnel in this county.
Thank you.
And God bless each and every one of you.
I appreciate it, and I can say that the veterans I do come in contact with do feel supported in this county. They've, you know, whenever they've come to me and I've needed something and I've, and I've needed to go to Rick or whatever, the answer has always been, whatever you need to help, as long as you're helping veterans, whatever you need. So I do know that they feel that support, but some of them are not great at asking for help.
Well, that's the mantra, really.
I was like, hopefully the green light will trigger that automatic training.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, one thing I'd say, um, I have an employee that actually has been to see you recently. One of the best, one of the best humans that I, that I know, um, volunteered for the Army as a child, that was all they wanted to do. He served in Afghanistan. You know, and he, and he jokes, but, you know, I, I've always told people, I was never man enough to be in the military. I mean, I, I was never man enough, what I had seen on movies and what I had talked to people, I was never man enough for somebody to talk, to be like, you know, basic training and talk to me like that and make me do things that I didn't want to do and all that kind of stuff. But this young man, and I say young man, but this young man, um, has given me a new appreciation or a greater appreciation for our military and our veterans. I mean, my grandfather, both my grandfathers were World War II veterans, but my family's not a military family per se. But this, this, I call him a kid, but this, this guy that works for me, you know, would joke about when he was serving in Afghanistan, he would, well, he was lead gunner in a convoy. Okay, well, I'm thinking, okay, so you're riding through the desert of Iraq, you're in the very first truck, you're the guy, his head's sticking out.
You're the guy.
Then he ju-, you know, and he joked about crawling on his belly, you know, searching for IEDs. And he said, "Yeah, I don't, I would only miss one one ti-" I, I, he said, "I would only missed one." And he joked about, you know, "I would only missed one, because if he'd have missed one, he'd have been blown to pieces." You know, and, um, we were on vacation a year or so ago, and, you know, and a couple big, you know, two-propeller Chinook helicopters flew over the beach, and I actually took a picture of them, and I texted him, you know, "Hey, saw these, made me think of you, bud." And he said, "Yeah, I remember taking small arms fire." He said, "He said, 'Yeah, that's, he said, 'That's like riding in a flying school bus.'" And he said, "And I remember taking small arms fire, flying in one of those over, you know, Kandahar or somewhere." And I'm going...
And that's their normal...
Dude! How do you, you know?
How do you transition?
How do you deal with, with that? You know, and he came home healthy. Well, except he actually got hit by a car on base in Hawaii one time and just had to have hip surgery because of that.
That's usually how it happens.
And is waiting to find out if the VA will actually pay him for that or not. We won't get into that, but, um, you know, but I'm just like, how do you? How are you normal? I mean, and he, he's a great guy, you know, father, three small children, and I'm just going, no wonder.
It's amazing the human capacity for survival.
These guys have, have issues, they deserve to have issues. I mean, and I say guys, guys and girls, they deserve to have issues, you know, and they deserve to be taken care of. I mean, because I, I just, and so he, he has given me a new appreciation for, you know, even though I've heard ninety million World War II, World War II stories from one grandfather who loved to talk about it and then never heard another, never heard a word from my other grandfather who didn't want to talk about it. You know, it's just different people and the way things are. But, um, I think anything that we can do to show appreciation and support for, um, the folks that, you know, continue to keep us the strongest, strongest country in the world, I mean, we need to do it. No. And, um, and so, I, I mean, yeah, I think this is a great thing.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
You beat me, second.
Second, all in favor?
Ms. Kilby, I would ask if you would do one thing?
Yes.
I think, you know, if we can get with the title of the time.
Absolutely.
Bethlehem Star, and also, uh, they have this little program on the radio that Lisa does, and go and talk about it.
Absolutely.
I mean, let's, let's, you know, and, and, uh, we get the word out there, it'd be great to see, uh, our county rise up green with green lights all over the place, it'd be great.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you for what you do for the veterans. Good job.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, resolution by a governing body of Alexander County authorizing memorandum of agreement for courtroom audio/video equipment upgrade, and I recognize, uh, Mr. David Moose, compliance and procurement specialist. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, tonight before you, as a resolution for the CRAVE project, CRAVE is an acronym that stands for courtroom audiovisual experience. Pursuant to certain general statutes, the county is required to provide adequate physical facilities for the courts, including cabling in courtrooms necessary to operate audio and video equipment to facilitate remote proceedings. The North Carolina Administrative Office of the Courts plans to install upgraded AV equipment in both the district and superior courtrooms in Alexander County through its vendor E Plus Incorporated. The NC AOC will cover the cost of the equipment purchase and installation, excluding any required low voltage cabling, as well as any required electrical connections or extensions. The AOC has offered Alexander County the option of entering into a memorandum of agreement to utilize its vendor E Plus for the installation of required low voltage equipment. Alexander County would cover the cost of the required cabling at an estimated cost of eight thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars per courtroom for a total of seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars. That is only a time and materials estimate, so that could fluctuate up or down, as well as any necessary electrical upgrades with the AOC covering the cost of the AV equipment purchase and installation. By leveraging the exist, the existing contract with E Plus Incorporated, the county is able to take advantage of utilizing the same vendor to better coordinate the completion of the project in a timely manner, thereby minimizing disruption to courtroom operations. In order for the county to enter into this memorandum of agreement, documentation must be provided that the Board of Commissioners has authorized County Manager Rick French to execute the document on behalf of the county. The resolution before we deny acknowledges the intent of the county to enter into this MOA with the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Courts for the cabling installation and authorizes County Manager Rick French to sign that agreement, thereby satisfying that documentation. And I'll be happy to read the resolution if you want to.
If you don't mind, sir.
Okay. So it says, "A resolution by governing body of Alexander County authorizing the memorandum of agreement for courtroom video, audio/video equipment upgrades." It states that whereas the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Courts has contracted with its vendor E Plus Incorporated to provide the installation of audio and video equipment in Alexander County courtrooms in order to facilitate the court's ability to hold proceedings by audio and video transmission, and whereas the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Courts intends to pay for the installation of the audio and video transmission equipment in certain courtrooms in Alexander County by and through its vendor, and whereas pursuant to general statute seven A dash three oh two and seven A dash three oh four subsection A two, the county is required to provide adequate physical facilities for the courts, including cabling in courtrooms necessary to operate the audio and video equipment, and whereas Alexander County desires to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Courts in order to utilize its vendor to install required audio/video cabling necessary for the required audio/video transmission equipment upgrades. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Alexander County that Alexander County does hereby agree to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Courts for the purpose of coordinating the installation of audio and video equipment, as well as required cabling in certain courtrooms in Alexander County, that County Manager Rick French and successor so titled is hereby authorized and directed to execute the memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Courts. Be glad to answer any questions?
Question? Okay, any questions? Thank you for reading the resolution. I make a motion, we proceed with the memorandum agreement of the CRAVE with the governing body. Have a motion, a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Most cases answered. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, moving on to item number eight, agreement between the Western Piedmont Council of Governments and Alexander County for the provision of administrative assistance, North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Transformation Grant, Alexander County Housing Air Teachers, October first through December thirty-first, 2022. Recognize Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is a copy...
In your packet is a copy of the agreement, uh, between Western Piedmont and the county to provide the services you just, uh, read. The contract for the COG is for thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And it's to provide administrative assistance on a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. I'll be glad to answer any questions, but it's pretty straightforward.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Have motion in a second. Any discussion, any question?
No, this is going to be a good deal. Once we get that thing remodeled, the two rooms upstairs, it's going to look good.
And this is for the chamber, old chamber building.
Yes, sir.
For all those out there that didn't know.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. I entertain a vote of approval. Raise your right hand. Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. French. Item number nine, uh, budget ordinance amendments number seven through thirteen and the NC Community College System Budget for year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. And I recognize Mr. Rick French once again.
Thank you. Budget amendment number seven is the budget for the local, uh, match funds required for the, of the county for the Housing Our Teachers Downtown Revitalization Grant Project. The North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Transformation Grant Fund is providing six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grant funding. The financing, uh, the matching funds will be paid from sales tax article forty-four. That can be used for economic development, public education and community college. The, uh, project budget ordinance was adopted on eight one twenty-two. Number eight is to increase the budget for, let's see, to decrease the budget estimated for a cost of a new courthouse. This is five hundred thousand dollars. This is to revisit the architectural and start that process again for a new courthouse, something we talked about before. Number nine is there are several parts of this budget amendment, uh, increased economic development budget for the receipt of twelve thousand five hundred dollars from the town of Taylorville for their fifty percent share of proposed consultation fee for the research and preparation of the National Register of Historic Places nomination for the downtown Taylorville Historic District and to increase the court facility budget for the estimated cost of courtroom cabling for remote, uh, proceedings as part of the state grave, grave project, which is, uh, is the courtroom audio, uh, visual experience project. Cost estimates are per the memorandum of agreement between the Administrative Office and the, of the courts in Alexander County to increase the county parks and recreation for courthouse park event expenses that are more than on original budget estimates due to being the first year of the park is open to decrease, to increase, I'm sorry, CBCC Alexander County Center budget for the addition of exterior cameras at the early college and applied technologies building per a recent request from CBCC. And to increase the library budget for the receipt of Library Services and Technology Act Scholarship Grant for a staff person to attend the Association of Rural and Small Libraries Conference. Number ten is to increase the Health Department budget for Duke Endowment Private Grant Funds of one hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars received in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, but not spent by June thirtieth. And two, unspent Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation Private Grant Funds of fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars received in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Both of the private grants, uh, support at the expansion of the comprehensive school-based, uh, oral health program. Number eleven is to adjust the Health Department, uh, Health Department Program Budgets for communicable disease, local receipts of a hundred and five thousand six thirty-six carried forward from prior years. Behavior of health donations of eight thirty-seven, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars carried forward from prior year. Care, uh, care management for high-risk pregnancy receipts of thirty-two thousand fifty-four dollars carried forward from prior year. Twelves, the budget for school system use of repair and renovation lottery fund money for classroom renovations at Alexander Central High School. Thirteen is the budget for the estimated expenses and revenues resulting from the county's contract to sell water to Energy United Corporation. And the last one is the North Carolina Community College System, uh, budget request form of, for thirty-two thousand dollars.
Let's hold up.
It is.
Okay. I'd just like, um, number eight on the courthouse, this is so we have a blueprint in place if we can get.
That's exactly right. We will have a shovel-ready project.
It's not like we're building one next week.
No, no, no. This just gets us started and.
Looking down the road. So, okay.
Because if we get the funding, this shovel-ready, it'll be better for us.
Yeah. If you don't have plans, you can't get the money.
Yeah, and if the plans are there, then it, it, it can go a lot quicker than getting funding.
You heard the budget ordinances. They have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve budget order seven through thirteen and also to approve the North Carolina Community College System County Budget for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three of thirty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Moving on to your next item, number ten, board appointment and reappointments. Recognize, uh, County Manager Rick French, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appoint Zach Shepard filling a vacancy through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the county appointments being Zach Shepard to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Through, through June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim, once again. And, uh, County Manager's report. Recognize, uh, Mr. Rick French once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few dates, important dates to point out, September twenty-fourth, forty-first Annual Midnight Celebration of the Arts. October of the first, uh, we have the Vertical Night Challenge at Rocky Face Park. And earlier in the day at two PM, we're going to try to dedicate the, uh, plaque at Rocky Face Park. We'd like to invite commissioners and Carolina Land and Lakes, uh, to attend if possible. On October the fourth is Alexander County National Night Out. The eighth is, uh, there's a court, at Courthouse Park, there's a concert with Landslide, which is a Fleetwood Mac tribute band. On the fifteenth of October is the Thirty-Second Annual Taylorville Apple Festival. November the fifth is the Sixth Annual Run for the Dogs Trail Race at Rocky Face Park. And of course, we have two parades this year. November the eleventh, the Veterans Day Parade, and December the third, Christmas Day Parade. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
It's a whole lot of stuff going on.
Yes, sir.
October's busy.
Yeah. Courthouse Park seems to be pretty busy. I think people are enjoying that. And with the splash pad, the heat stays on for a while. It'll be, uh, pretty popular again. So, uh, thank you, Mr. French, for that information. Got to entertain the motion to, uh, accept our consent agenda.
Close motion.
Okay, have a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? If none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. This time we'll close our regular Board of Commissioner meeting, but we will open the Board of Commissioners meeting for Consolidated Human Services. And, uh, welcome everyone to, uh, our meeting. And, uh, is there any public comment for this? Okay. All right, uh, move on to item number three, accreditation update. I would recognize, uh, Kimberly Edmiston, Health Educator. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege to be here. I think it may be different than what's in your packet, so I will let you know that, um, we had our accreditation survey on September first. The board came in, that was the live portion, so you know, as you know, we've been planning for that for quite some time. And they, the dashboard opened up for all of our data and we had everything in that we were required to have in on time. Actually, just a little early. And, um, they opened that dashboard up to us again after they reviewed all the evidence at, uh, in August. And once that opened up to us again, then we were able, that was August thirtieth that it reopened. We were able to submit, um, the, the random selection of personnel records that they were seeking for the, um, to review. And we had two days to gather all that evidence and to answer any questions that they had about other material that was, uh, submitted. And then they were here on site September first. And this was the first year that they gave us the partial remote option. So several folks were, uh, were remote and then we had two sites or, uh, surveyor team members here and a shadow surveyor. And we were very pleased to find out that, uh, we passed, but we passed with complete green lights, which actually meant they have recommended the, um, the Health Department for accreditation with honors. In the letter back that we received, that Billy actually received this week, that, uh, end of last week, actually, they recommended, they stated that recommendation, which would be formalized at the November meeting once the board actually votes to convey the actual accreditation. But they made special comment to say that it is, uh, exceptional to achieve that status in a normal four-year cycle. And that in a six-year cycle, due to the pandemic with, um, all that that came with, plus leadership change and new personnel, that it was extremely exceptional. So it's wonderful to be able to stand up here and say that on behalf of the team because everyone did such a remarkable job. And there was a lot of noted accomplishments that they were very impressed to see since the previous survey in twenty sixteen. You went through a consolidation, opened up the new administrative building, had new handicap accessible front, uh, door and clinic room and a new front walk, renovated and expanded the clinic lobby, added a new and improved WIC department area, added three clinic rooms in order to be able to serve more patients and to help with patient flow. Opened up an immunization room just for vaccines. The new behavioral health program was added. The new dental and schools program was added. The Med South Lifestyles Program Research Project with UNC was added. And, and most of this was done while preparing for and conducting the, uh, response to COVID nineteen. So they were extremely impressed and they were extremely impressed with the activation and that with the active role that you all play and governance and the close relationship between the Health Department and commissioners. Uh, and as the Consolidated Health Services Board. Looking ahead for preparations, we've already started in twenty twenty-two, beginning for twenty twenty-six. So, um, Billy had to set up quarterly meetings to prepare so that anything that is annual that we have to show, um, compliance with, and that will already be looked at on a, on an, uh, quarterly basis each year. And then anything that we have already begun to gather, we are putting in the appropriate folders and the appropriate standards for twenty twenty-six. And it's, uh, part of our performance review process so that we can make sure that each of us, um, if we're supervising anybody, that we're making sure that they're following through with the documentation that they need. One of the pieces of the accreditation is the Community Health Assessment. The last one was in twenty eighteen. So we're opening this fall, of course, it is time to open the twenty twenty-two Community Health Assessment, which will be part of the twenty twenty-six Accreditation Survey. And we'll need to be able in that, um, Accreditation Standards Forty-One to demonstrate your role in seeking public input in the community health, in the community's health and the priorities over the four-year period to come, um, after this twenty twenty-two assessment. So we would propose that we open that survey, the digital version and all of the media output and the social media posts and where, where all we open the solicitation for public input with a statement. The Alexander County Board of Commissioners slash Consolidated Health, Consolidated Human Services Board requests your input regarding the health of our community and the health priorities that our community will focus on for improvement over the next four years. Thank you for completing this survey. And if, we would need your approval to just open the survey with that information.
Okay. A lot of good things, good reports, so.
Lot of good work. This community did great work and it was very clear. It was a privilege just coming and being here no longer than I have to get to see all of the wonderful work that the Health Department, the community and the commissioners have done together was, um, was good to see it recognized in such a strong way.
I don't remember the guy's name, gentleman, excuse me, that, uh, was actually running the program that day. I don't remember his name, but, I mean, he was really excited about, you had the administration build, I think he was more excited about that than anything it sounded like because he liked the way that things had moved around and, and Ronnie fired the answers right back and didn't hesitate. And, and that worked out real well because I'm like, you know, and I just sit there and listen. I'm like, I don't listen to anything except ditto. But, uh, I thought it went real, real well. I was, uh, I was thoroughly impressed that, I was impressed the way he felt about things. So that, that spoke high. You could tell you were going to get a high ranking. You could tell it was coming. So that was very good.
There were two on the team that had been there before and they commented on just the, the wow from everything that you accomplished and everything that was so different.
Very good. I'm telling you, that was, that was, that was good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Real good. Uh, so we need to approve going forward with the accreditation. Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the statement.
All second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hes. Appreciate your work. Next, our communicable disease report. Emily Vick, uh, RN and our nurse.
All right, so I'm going to give you the communicable disease report. Um, communicable diseases are defined as dangerous to public health and must be reported per the Administrative Code. They can be spread from person to person, animal to person. They can be airborne through bacteria or, uh, blood and other body fluids. The Health Department's role is we investigate these cases, um, determine control measures, um, to prevent the spread, determine outbreaks, clusters, and then we complete the reports, um, through a state portal, um, internet portal that's called NC Ads. And our biggest role is prevention of the communicable diseases. Much time, uh, these public health duties go unnoticed, but with COVID nineteen, um, it brought their significance to the forefront. And really until very recently, our main focus since the end of twenty twenty has been COVID nineteen. It's helped us to, um, with disease surveillance, help with control, uh, efforts, prevention, intervention strategies, policies, responding to events in the community and involving potential exposure to communicable disease. As the Health Department, we have the ability to issue control, um, quarantine and isolation measures. Isolation meaning we separate sick people with a contagious disease from people who are not sick. And then quarantine separates and restricts the movement of people who may have been exposed to a contagious disease to see if they become sick. We have a look at our, um, our graphs of all our communicable diseases of twenty twenty-one, as you can see up on the screen. Chlamydia and gonorrhea, um, are still, next to COVID nineteen are our, uh, top, top two, um, communicable diseases in our STD, uh, clinics. And you can see on the, the graph, all of the other, um, diseases that we had. COVID nineteen remained the most prevalent in twenty twenty-one with ninety-seven percent. Chlamydia and gonorrhea cases did decrease from twenty twenty. Our hepatitis A cases. Our hepatitis A cases did rise unfortunately in 2021. And then we had one more syphilis case in 2021 than the previous year. Last year, we updated you with a graph of 2015 to 2020. But our reporting has changed and we went from a fiscal year reporting to a calendar year to kind of match with the state's framework so we don't have a, a big long, you know, year graph to show you. And then our hepatitis A case that rose in 2021, 11 of our 12 reported cases were unfortunately linked to drug abuse. Our COVID-19 numbers, we've had 11,693 total cases to date. We've had 14 cases, or sorry, 160 cases in the last 14 days and 67 cases in the last seven. We currently have three people in the hospital. Unfortunately, we've had 151 total deaths to date. We've had 48% of our Alexander County citizens that have received at least one vaccine dose. 45% of our Alexander County citizens are fully vaccinated. And then 25% of our Alexander County citizens have received at least one booster dose. So what are we doing for the COVID? We are still testing Monday through Friday. The client just caused us to schedule that appointment with our lab. We're doing vaccinations. We have something available for everybody, six months all the way up. We are doing the new bivalent booster. We're educating with weekly numbers on our Facebook and our Health Department website. And then we're meeting monthly or as needed with representatives from various county agencies. And then we have our monkey pox update. We have total 399 cases in North Carolina. 98% of these cases are male. 67% of these cases are black or African American. And currently, we have no cases in Alexander County. For the monkey pox, we can, we do have the supplies to test per state guidelines. We do not have any vaccine on hand, but we can request it or can send to a hub like Catawba County, they have it. We're educating on our Facebook page and our county, or Health Department website. And then we're discussing in monthly county meetings and our monthly Epi Team meetings.
I only have one question. When's the flu shot start? When you ready?
October.
October?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Are you going to have the double dose shot like you had before?
The high dose, yes.
I call it the dull dose.
Yes, yes, yeah. And we're going to do our drive-through clinics every Friday from 1:00 to 3:00 in October.
Okay.
Well, CBS asked me if I wanted to come in for one last week when I was in the drive-through. And I told them, no, thank you. But that's just me.
Little bit early, I think.
Yeah, yeah, just a little bit early.
Actually, I had the flu in July.
Oh, wow.
And it was much worse than COVID because I've had it twice.
Sorry.
Now, the folks that, oh, excuse me, sir, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. But the folks that want to take the COVID vaccine that they're talking about, you ladies are experts, are they going to be able to take the pneumonia shot and that vaccine shot at the same time? So they don't have to make two or three trips?
They say they can, they can be administered at the same time. We recommend waiting maybe two weeks in between, but they can be administered at the same time.
Okay.
Just because of the side effects.
All right, I was just, you know, I've heard people talk about it. I hear it's tough to take them both at one time, you know? But thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. And this time, recognize for closing comments and bad debt write-off, Billy Walker, Health Director.
I'm going to run through this really quick. I know y'all are tired of hearing about some of the communicable disease, but just wanted to update you on a cer, certain things that are going on with public health. But every year, we come to you with the bad debt write-off. And I'm not going to talk about this, you've got it in your packet, and you can talk about it more in closed session due to confidentiality. But we're requesting that you write off what we currently have as our bad debts. And these are certain payments for services that were already rendered and, or charges, and they've not been paid. And so every six months, we bring this amount. And this is actually the first one that we've had since COVID due to us not really seeing patients during that COVID time. And I can ask, I can answer any questions about the bad debt write-off, but it's, it's in your packet.
Well, I know, but it doesn't appear to be that much.
It's not.
I'm surprised, it seems lower to me.
Well, you have to take in effect that we're just now getting, starting to see clients and the majority of it is our dental clinic.
Now, how much of this is Medicaid has not paid you yet that you're still waiting? And you may have been waiting for a long time and they may come back and pay some of it?
Well, these are patients with no social security number.
Okay.
So that one would go to the debt set off, which is through their tax, their tax refund.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I believe that we approved the debt write-off for 2022, bad debt write-off for the Health Department.
Second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, Nancy. Thank you. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
And next, recognize our Senior Center Director, Kristi Hunt.
We got your leave, why am I wrapping it up?
No, no, you're still hanging on.
Well, you know, I probably sound like a broken record, but the Senior Center's doing great. We, we've had a lot of good activities and our numbers are increasing. As you can see there, we have a good crowd. We had a large ice cream social that we actually had a record number of 75 people to attend. So it, it was a lot of fun, a lot of fun.
People's ready to get out.
They're ready to get out, they're just ready to do. We had our health fair this past Friday. We had about 130 people to come. It was amazing. We had lots of vendors there that were giving good information and just, everybody was enjoying getting to win prizes. And, you know, it was, it was just a lot of fun and they really enjoyed it. So it was a happy time, happy time. I've heard some say that it was the best one yet. You know, we just had a lot of people, it's, it, this was the first one since 2019 that we actually got to have in person. And so it was, it was time, it was great.
That's good.
Our Senior Center turns 30 this year. I've only been working for the Senior Center for six years, but I'm excited to get to celebrate with this. We've done a lot of research, thanks to our HR department too, and to find out all of the, the past directors. We're having a plaque made with the past directors' names on there and the dates that they have served. And we hope that all of them that can attend will come and, and celebrate with us. It's, it's going to be fun. Our musicians that typically play every Monday, we have invited them to come and sit and play some for us. We will be showing some of our past videos on our website. If you all have not looked at our website and watched the Oh Brother video or our Night at the Opry, you really should do that. It, it was a lot of fun. I've enjoyed watching them myself. We've actually put them up a few times and played them for other people that have come in and it's a hoot.
Good local talent.
Oh, yeah, it's wonderful talent. We have some plans for next year to try to recreate some of those and maybe even do a hee-haw, something like that, and just, just have some fun with that. We are adding some more evidence-based classes. Dur Holcomb from the Extension Office is going to be teaching a FIT class over at Bethlehem, beginning August, listen, I mean, October 11th. And then next February, Western Piedmont Council of Governments will be coming and teaching a Matter of Balance class. So those are some excellent classes to keep our seniors active and moving like they need to be.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's good, we, we have a good time. We love them. Senior Center is actually a really good resource center. They come talk to us, they share our, their concerns and we try to help them the best we can. If we don't know the answers, we send them to where they need to go. So we do the best we can with that. If you want to switch to the next one, I think it's our Medicare. We have saved a lot of money so far this year, $147,000. But our big open enrollment is coming up. We have started accepting the forms already and I expect it to be a very big year. There's a lot of changes going on with Medicare right now. We, there, some of the drug plans have upped the deductibles, but we will do our best to make sure we keep them in the best plans possible. So we encourage everyone to come out. Lisa from the radio station actually had me on a couple of weeks. I was very nervous about going on, but she made it very easy for me. So we kind of get the word out there that it's very, very important for these people to come in and let us check their plans for them. Whether it's a drug plan or whether it's a Medicare Advantage plan, I can actually enroll in both. So we just want to help do what's best for them and what works for them.
Well, that's good and savings is good, especially for our county residents.
Yeah, it is. It's the more money we can keep in the pocket, we can, you know, we, we want to do that. Our participation numbers there, as you can see, had, had kind of dipped a little bit there from May to June. But every time there's the COVID scare, our numbers will kind of dip a little bit and then they kind of go back up. But they're, they're increasing again, so I'm really excited about that. Like I said, I think they are, they're really, really excited about getting out and about again and just doing all the fun things we do. Our birthday parties are just such a big hit, they love them, so that's really good. Any questions?
Keep up the good work.
All right, well, I appreciate it. I'm still working on more grants to get. I don't really announce a lot of those, but we did get a $1,500 technology grant last fiscal year that I didn't bother to announce. But it was still good, every little dollar helps. And I've applied for a $2,800 fraud prevention grant, so we hope to get that.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and next I'll recognize Social Service Director, Thomas Mitch.
All right, good evening. I brought you a printout instead of bringing my big board this time. So Luann fixed that up for me, so I don't have to haul that around. Have a brief update for you guys. So I just wanted to give you an update on the vacancies and you can see that on your chart as you're passing that around, our org chart. So we're working to get those yellows filled in. We're sitting at about 12% vacancy rate, which, you know, I'll count that as a success. This is a tough hiring environment, as anybody knows who hires or reads the news about that. So we, we've had a couple promotions within the agency, actually three. We had Shannon Williams and Shannon Adams been promoted to CPS supervisors. And then we had Teresa Brown over on the Economic Services side promoted to adult Medicaid supervisor. So it's good to see internal promotions, that's always a good thing. Next slide. I wanted to let you guys know about employee engagement that we're doing. We do this once a month, that's an hour a month. We don't party as hard as Senior Center, but, you know, we, we try. And so we're just, they only allowed to party for an hour over at my place. But, so we do like hot dogs, we've done ice cream and fruit and that kind of thing just to kind of keep staff engaged and talking to each other and kind of break the monotony a little bit. Next slide. I think this has kind of made its rounds on the, in the, in the Times, also on the radio. But a local farmer who wants to remain anonymous has been providing produce and our DSS staff go and get that, bring it to the parking lot once or twice a week, depending on what they are able to provide us. And then that's for whoever wants to come and get it. So it's kind of been a, usually on Tuesdays and Thursdays, lots of cucumbers. I think folks got tired of the zucchini, but we've had lots of, lots of cucumbers. So if any, if you guys know of anybody that makes pickles, they've had the biggest cucumbers you ever want to see. I tried to talk to somebody into making some pickles, but haven't gotten any yet, so we'll see. But they are doing that twice a week. So hopefully that'll, we can keep that relationship and get it early in the season next year. So it's a good thing for the community. Next slide. So Garrett and I have been working hard on our shelter preparations. And just a few things that we've been doing on that. We've got, everybody's doing some virtual training at the agency. I think everybody knows that it's DSS's responsibility to staff an emergency shelter when one is opened up. So I'm reminding staff of that and we are, we've made some shelter teams. We're doing some in-person shelter training this Wednesday, actually over East Taylorsville Baptist Church. Health Department will be involved in that as well because Health Department also has a role in, in sheltering. So we want to make sure that when and if a shelter is needed in this county, again, that we will be prepared. And from what I'm hearing, the churches in this community really stepped up when you guys had the flooding event. But I think that DSS could have done better. So if we are faced with that, again, you know, I want to make sure that we're there to serve the community the way it needs to be done. So we're preparing our staff because you need to constantly be prepared. And I think the, the best way to prepare staff really is to do a full-out live simulation. We're aways from being able to do that, but we want to be able to do that so we can actually set a shelter up so that when an event happens, it's not the first time that staff is, is doing that. Next slide. Playground, if you guys have seen our playground, you know it needs some work. So we had a previous employee that did some fundraising and we also have some money in the budget to make some playground improvements. So Josh over in maintenance is going to help us get that completed. Some volunteers are also doing some work. And so hopefully we'll be able to bring those to you, those improvements to you, maybe the first winter meeting to show you the results of that. So we've got a few large things and some small things that we need to do to make our playground look a little better for our foster children and kids who are doing visits with their parents, things like that, to make it a little bit more safe and fun for those kids. And next slide. So, you know, we normally point out like the number of foster children that we have. But I wanted to, before we go into this slide, see if you guys had any questions about any of the statistics on our report. You know, I don't want to go over line by line, but if, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to ask them, answer them. One thing I wanted to point out is we have 63 children in foster care, which is down from 68 last time. So I wanted to focus on our adoptions. And so the, you know, pretty much the way these numbers work is the adoptions, we have to work that back-end number in order for our front-end number to go down. And we've, we're just really behind on our adoptions, there's just no other way to say it. So we're in the process of forming a permanent adoption committee. And we, we're missing one member, actually two members, and we're trying to fill those positions. But we're still continuing to put together monthly adoption committee meetings so that we can get these adoptions approved and get children into their adoptive homes and get those through the court system. So we have 19 children who are free to adopt as, as of right now. 11 of those are in adopt, in adoptive placements. So, you know, they need to go through the committee, but those 11 are, you know, fairly stable placements. Three children are not in adoptive placements, so we will have to find an adoptive home for them. We have a, a four in a sibling group that have been in the same placement for five years. Those likely will not be adopted. This really is a financial situation for the family. And it, it basically boils down to they are getting more money to support these kids in a foster care setting than they would be in an adoptive setting. But these, these kids are, are happy, they, they have lots of behaviors, these kids. So moving them is probably not the best option. But those four on our slate that likely won't be adopted. One we're working with is an ICWA case and that's an Indian, we have Indian tribes. So an Indian tribe has been named, so there's a, a process that we have to go through. So that will hold that adoption up. And then we had two that were just adopted that we had a celebration this Friday, it's scheduled at the courthouse. Then we had one last Friday for two adoptions that were done. So, and my goal is in the next six months, we can get the majority of these 19 adopted, except for the ones that are on the screen that looks like there may be some hangups. And that will lower And that will lower our front-end number, our foster care number significantly, assuming that we, that we kind of balance it out. And so that's pretty much the way we really should work. As the front-end number goes up, as kids in care continue to climb, we should be working these adoptions on the back end, and so we are really focusing on that, and so we're, our goal is to do three a month. So we will get, we will get a large incentive. If we do that for the rest of the fiscal year, we'll get a large incentive from the state because after you meet your, you exceed your goal, you get money, the county gets money per adoption that has been completed, but that won't be our trend. So if we do, just for a number, if we do 18 adoptions this year, that's not going to be typical for us, you know, I think our typical number probably is going to be eight to 10, whereas we have been averaging three to five. So this will be a banner year for us if we continue, but it, it's not going to be a typical year, it's just because we're kind of working down the backlog. And I think that's it, in case you guys have questions.
In the, the first line, 19 children free to adopt.
Mm-hmm.
Then under it says 11 children in adoptive placements. Is that 11 of the 19?
The, the numbers below the 19 is the breakdown of the 19.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
It appears to be going very well.
So far, so good.
Very good, very good.
As far as the turnover rate, has it reduced some?
Oh, yeah, it, it keeps reducing. We were at about 27% when I came on board, so it's, it's steadily decreasing, which is what we want to see.
Very good.
Thank you. At this time, I'll make a motion, we go into, or to adjourn and go into closed session per NC Statute 143-31811 at 145 and 6 HIPAA Privacy Rule for Economic Development, Contractual, and Personnel.
Second.
You have a second. All in favor, raise your hand. And we will re-adjourn only for adjournments.